I call to order the January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have the approval of minutes of December twelfth, two thousand and nineteen special joint meeting.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the minutes of December twelfth, two thousand and nineteen special joint meeting as submitted.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor. And we have the minutes of December sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the minutes of the December sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen regular meeting as submitted.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor. Thank you. It's now slightly past the hour of seven o'clock. We have William Liver, Police Chief, for the appointment of Connor Henry as Police Officer. Chief, Connor.
Have a seat, relax. Mr. Chair, members of the Board, this is one of those enjoyable moments where I come before you to ask you to appoint a young man as a new member of the Northborough Police Department. I'd like to introduce, well, some of you may not need to be introduced, Connor's a lifelong resident of Northborough, but Connor Henry. Connor went through our selection process and he surfaced to the top and he is here before you tonight to be appointed. Hopefully you'll appoint him. The process started back in December with advertisements and on December twenty first, we held our physical abilities testing, which included a mile and a half run that they have to age appropriate scale in order to have to finish it in time. There are timed push-ups, timed sit-ups, and a flexibility stretch and reach test. And believe it or not, we had several candidates that failed one or more stations, which reduced the pool of candidates that would have gone on to interviews. Then we brought back the survivors of that test and we brought them through a first interview phase and that interview group was tasked with recommending a smaller number to go before a final interview that consisted of myself, Lieutenant Galvin, and Chairman Perol. And that was last Tuesday, the seventh. We brought in three candidates. All three of them did well, two of them did extremely well, but one of them did even better than that. And at the end of the night, we deliberated and we came to the conclusion that the three of us unanimously supported Connor as our appointee to recommend to the Board. So with that said, Connor, I said, he grew up in Northborough, he is a product of the school system, graduated from Elgonquin Regional High School. He also graduated from Assumption College with a degree and a Bachelor of Arts in Criminology. He's also served as a JV-two baseball and soccer coach for the Elgonquin Boys Soccer and Basketball Teams. Currently, he's working for a local contractor here in town. In order to get Connor into a police academy, I need to have a letter of appointment that's dated prior to the thirty day deadline before the start of the academy. So therefore, I'm asking for an appointment date that would have Connor start on March first. The academy starts in April, so I need to get the letter in with a date that predates that deadline. So therefore, I'm asking for you to appoint Connor for March first. If the Board has any questions, I'll be free to answer them.
Thank you, Chief. Connor, would you like to add some?
Yeah, so I would just first like to thank Chief Liver, Lieutenant Galvin, Board of Selectmen, for having me here. It's great to be part of such a great, you know, community, getting everybody together, all the support from friends, family, you know. Being in Northborough is a really special place and I'm sure you guys can attest to that, having worked here. I'm just looking forward to it, you know, it's a new chapter in my life and a not-so-new place, which I'm looking forward to.
Great. Thank you very much. Comments from the Board? Leslie?
First of all, if your family could introduce themselves, I think that would be wonderful. You have a nice showing here with everyone here.
Yes, so first, my father, David, my mother, Lisa, my sister, Taylor, my girlfriend, Carly, and my other sister, Nicole.
Wonderful. And also, we have some representatives from the Police Department as well. If you could all introduce yourselves.
Chris Bezzell.
Lieutenant Joe Galvin.
From Camila, District.
Joe Griffin.
Tom McDonald.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for being here. I had not seen the agenda yet, so when I saw, well, I hadn't seen all the supporting materials, but I had seen the agenda and it said Connor Henry and I actually texted the Chief and I said, "Is this Lee Connor Henry graduated from Elgonquin in about fourteen or so?" And he said, "Yes, it is indeed." And I am just thrilled. You are an exceptional individual. You proved yourself to be that way at Elgonquin through all your activities there and your sports, you're an outstanding athlete. And you went on to do that at Assumption Soccer and being captain and so forth. And I think that it just speaks so much for your character and your integrity and your discipline and the fact that you're that involved at Elgonquin now says a whole lot because you're passing on all these things to younger people who view you as a role model, I'm sure, because you could actually say, "Been there, done that." You know, you're not just standing there in front of everybody thinking that you know what you're doing, you actually do know what you're doing. So I think that that espouses a lot of respect from the kids there and that says a lot about you as an individual. So you have a fantastic resume. I know you, I know your family so well. Our kids overlap a lot in the high school and your parents are wonderful. I can attest to the fact to how supportive they are and, wow, it's kind of emotional. Kind of emotional for me. And you as well, but you're amazing parents, what you've done with your kids. And I know Taylor is a fantastic, you're teaching now, right? And Nicole is an attorney and working in Boston, correct? And, you know, you've all done so well and it just says a lot about your family as individuals and how you raised your family and how you're going to represent Northborough. So I am thrilled and thank you very much for staying in Northborough and not going elsewhere.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much, Connor.
Thank you, Leslie. Other comments? I will just add my comments. I think, Leslie, you hit it on the head there. Character, integrity, respect, or discipline qualities that really are fundamental qualities for a police officer. And I think you've exhibited those qualities throughout your academic career, leadership on and off the field, and I think it's just an excellent choice. Happy you're choosing to stay here and happy that you were the candidate to emerge in this selection process, so congratulations. Good luck at the academy.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm gonna stop here before I start crying too, so. Thanks very much. Yeah, thanks. So, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move the Board vote to appoint Connor Henry to the position of Police Officer effective March first, two thousand and twenty.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor. Great. Congratulations.
Thank you.
This town clerk is gonna give you your oath. Please, your lady, read some high words. Aye, Connor Henry.
Aye, Connor Henry.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
Bear true faith and allegiance.
To the bond law of Massachusetts.
To the bond law of Massachusetts.
And will support the Constitution thereof.
And will support the Constitution thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye, Connor Henry.
Aye, Connor Henry.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent on me.
All the duties incumbent on me.
As a police officer for the Town of Northborough.
As a police officer for the Town of Northborough.
According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution.
Of the Constitution.
The bylaws of the Town.
The bylaws of the Town.
And the laws of this Commonwealth.
And the laws of this Commonwealth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye, Connor Henry.
Aye, Connor Henry.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Unless you wanna stick around for the rest of the evening?
See you guys. See ya.
Have a great rest of your evening.
Thank you.
Bye, Taylor.
Yeah.
How are you?
Hi.
He's a, he's a, he's a.
Probably, yeah, thank you, Terry. Yeah, we're gonna have to keep one open. It's now past the hour of seven oh five. We have Fred Litchfield, Town Engineer, for approval of stop signs along Davis Street. And we have Scott Sharpentier, DPW Director, as well. Gentlemen?
Thank you. Appreciate your time tonight. I have submitted a brief memo and a map outlining what we're talking about tonight. We have received, staff has received some concerns about traffic flow on Davis Street and after reviewing the area in question, the two exits from Indian Meadow onto Davis Street and Lanthorn onto Davis Street, it appears as though some stop signs are warranted at each of those locations in order to make it a little bit safer for people exiting so that there's a little better sight distance. The street trees are encroaching on the right-of-way, the travel portion of the right-of-way, and it would be a little bit safer if people take some more time and edge out onto Davis Street carefully as opposed to just no stop sign and traveling right out, so.
Okay. So to be clear, these are stop signs on the side streets that are coming onto Davis Street?
That's correct. Yeah, each end of Indian Meadow and Lanthorn.
Right.
Brings a little uniformity to the area. There's a stop sign at the end of Hamilton and one at Nelson as well, so it just maintains some uniformity along those roadways.
Yeah, okay, very good. Any questions or comments from the Board? Yes, Tim?
The stop signs are supposed to improve visibility for people that are pulling out from Indian Meadow and Lanthorn out onto Davis Street?
More to provide a little incentive for them to use additional caution than visibility. The visibility is restricted for the people traveling along Davis Street because of the number of street trees and where we're not in the habit of taking down street trees to improve sight distance, this would give the people exiting from Lanthorn and Indian Meadow onto Davis a little more reason to be cautious when pulling out as opposed to just moving out if they don't see anything right away.
Okay, 'cause my understanding in speaking to some people down in that area that their concern was visibility and they don't understand how, like, everybody, nobody comes up to Indian Meadow and just whips out onto Davis Street, like, they come up, they stop. Now, like, to assume there's a stop sign there. So putting the stop sign there isn't gonna do anything to improve the visibility of coming out of Indian Meadow onto Davis, like, it's just, it's a stop sign, it's not, it doesn't address the root concern that the residents have in that area. Like, I understand there's one corner of Indian Meadow and Davis where one resident has their hedges there just completely overgrown and that seems to be one of the main issues is that he doesn't trim his trees or his hedges, so I'm, like, I'm all for the stop signs, like, it's, I just don't understand how, just putting up a stop sign is good to address the main issue of visibility pulling out.
At the other Indian Meadow, there's been traffic incidents where vehicles just kept on going straight ahead into the property across the street. The MUTCD gives you a little bit of flexibility on where you put the stop bar and where you put the stop sign from the intersection to provide appropriate sight distance, so you can put your stop sign and stop bar a little closer to the intersection when there are sight distance issues in the triangles. I have reached out to that resident, by the way, in the past about his hedges, they're enormous.
Yeah.
And we're working with him to trim them back continuously.
The common request is to put the stop sign on Davis Street, which is inappropriate. And so we're recommending the stop signs on the side streets to provide incentive for the drivers to use a little more caution when pulling out. The stop sign gives a visual recognition that you really should be stopping and looking and, as opposed to, what happens is people get comfortable in their own neighborhood and they tend to drive right through that area where there's, actually, it's an unwritten rule that you should be stopping anyway, but the stop sign just makes it that much more prominent.
Yeah, yeah, and like I said, I'm all for the stop signs, it makes complete sense to have them, but just, I know they're talking to people down in that area that the concern was visibility and if you're talking with that specific person about getting those hedges under control, I think that will go a long way, much like the stop signs would, to help people get better visibility of pulling out.
Yeah, we addressed the lower hedges at the other Indian Meadow entrance, around that, I think it was a cherry tree, but yeah, we're working with that resident.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Leslie?
A real quick question along those lines, you know, if you speak with somebody and they say, "Yeah, yeah, yeah, I'll take care of it," and they don't, what kind of follow-up is there and what can we do to ensure, because that is a huge issue. I know there are few places, you know, I remember at the bottom of Allen Street, the Allen Street Bridge, as you go onto Hudson, that used to be a big thing over there in that corner. So I know there's some spots in town, but what happens if somebody doesn't really comply when you want them to?
We can maintain it. If it's within our right-of-way, we can maintain it. We can get our roadside mowing operations there.
Okay.
And we have in the past.
Okay.
We did that on the Allen-Hudson Street. That's a problem location due to invasive, they grow rapidly down there.
Yes, yes.
And we have other locations where ornamentals have been planted, large lilacs, and we have to reach out to the resident and let them trim them. One is at Northgate and South Street. If you were looking away from the curve, there were some lilac bushes there, you see them now, they're basically sticks with a little lilac plume on the top. They were able to maintain those.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move the Board vote to approve stop sign locations as recommended by the Town Engineer at the following locations: at both intersections of Indian Meadow Drive at Davis Street and at the intersection of Lanthorn Road at Davis Street.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Great. Thank you very much. Yep. Thank you. Which brings us to reports. Julia?
Yes, thank you. So on January eighth, White Cliffs Committee met and it was a two-hour, very productive meeting that was devoted to a presentation and discussion about possible uses of the mansion. And as always, the architects began with saying there are a lot of what they call character-defining traits in the house that should be preserved. So this was the first meeting and I have to emphasize that it was a very preliminary meeting about use, how we can reuse the house. And mostly it was so that we could get some general ideas about how to then bring it to the larger community to have the conversation about what the town wants. So we didn't get into any details. Suffice it to say that municipal use was discussed, event space was discussed, as well as a combination of both. So the next meeting will be Wednesday, February fifth, at three PM in this room and they are open to anyone who's interested and it's been very nice. We've had a lot of people come and offer comments and it's helpful. So my second thing is that on January ninth, I attended CMRPC or Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. And most of that presentation was about the 2020 federal census. An interesting fact, the federal slash every ten-year census has been taken since seventeen ninety and we are encouraged to ask our residents to please make sure that everyone participates. Recently, you probably also received your census, your town census. And Andy Dowd and I had a little talk about this and he asked that, I just ask if you would please remember to return that because returning that form helps keep your voter active, your voter status active, confirms your residency, and allows the town and schools to track population trends. And for dog owners, you can also renew your licenses there. And I just wanna go back to the 2020 every ten-year census. It's very important because that's how we are allocated our representatives in Congress as well as a lot of federal tax dollars. So if you could, please remember to fill out all of your forms, that'd be great. And my last thing is I would like to bring up something to the Board about advertising for town meeting, which will be happening April twenty seventh. And, you know, we always worry about getting people there and how to advertise for that. And one of the things that I would like to bring up for discussion or maybe suggest is that about a year ago in our tax bills, we got something like this, which is, which was just a little piece of paper saying that you could pay online. And I wonder if we could consider putting something in the tax bills which goes to every resident and voting family, or even having something on the outside of the envelope that would just say, you know, "Town meeting, April twenty seventh" and kinda save the date. Another fact that Jason reminded me of actually is that we are changing the time for town meetings, so it's important that people get that new information. So I'll defer to the Chairman about how you want to, if you wanna discuss this or if you would like to put it on another agenda at another time.
Yeah, I mean, we certainly could take it into consideration. I don't know what the cost difference would be to include a flyer in the mailing of the, what would be the May tax bill, which would be sent thirty days in advance, right? Something like that.
Through the Chair. It's typically an insert, a one-page insert is between five and six hundred dollars, depending.
Total cost?
Uh, yes.
That would be the total. I would have no objection to doing that. I don't know how effective I think it would be. It, in part, depends, I think, on who's actually receiving notice of the tax bill. As many mortgage holders or people with mortgages or, those bills are automatically forwarded a lot of time to their mortgage company and paid out of escrow. And in those cases, I don't know that the homeowner, does the homeowner still receive a copy?
So probably, approximately fifty percent of tax bills are paid through escrow. So although they may receive a copy, a lot of people just don't, they either don't receive them or they don't, they don't.
Don't really pay attention to them.
But about fifty percent are through escrow. Just by, I mean, this is something the Board wants us to do and I don't have a, it's not something we budgeted to do, so moving forward, if that's something from a policy decision, I'd wanna make sure that we're including that in the budget. But just by way of reference, you know, we do other things to draw attention to town meeting. Obviously, we have the roadway alert signs that we set up for several weeks in the downtown so that people see. It's on the lines, we send it out through Town, through Town News, if you subscribe for, to receive any of Town information. We do it through social media, Facebook, we release it through the, as press releases through the local media. The Advocate usually does an excellent job of covering town meeting while in advance. And, you know, I'm all for, you know, making sure people are aware of town meeting, but, you know, I've also been at this for twenty-five years and I can tell you that it's not a question of advertising or people knowing. I mean, town meeting has been the fourth Monday since nineteen seventy. So if you've been around, you know it or you've heard. And there's plenty of studies out there that show, it's really what's on the agenda that drives who shows up. You know, one year we had a citizen petition to do an under-ride and cut the school budget and we had twelve hundred people show up. Other years, we have no contested budgets or issues and you get, you know, several hundred people, core people, that show up. So it's very heavily driven by what's on the warrant. And if you have items, large building projects or something controversial, that generates a lot of buzz, you're gonna get more people. But, you know, it's funny, I, to some extent, you're a victim of your own circumstances in a town where things are done well. We've had ten consecutive budgets go to town meeting with unanimous support of every member of every board and committee. And we've had unanimous support for every building project and while certainly there's some discussion there, you know, we do a very good job of planning and getting that information out. I mean, we avoid needless controversy. There's obviously good public debate that takes place at town meeting over certain things, but the warrant itself is what drives the attendance, so. You know, we, again, we do all the, we hit all the points that everybody does to get the word out and, you know, will this make a difference either way? No, there is an expense to it, but again, it's a policy decision of the Board. I think the message signs, the social media, the emails, the webpage, the press releases, you know, it's hard not to know town meeting. You have to make a decision to completely disconnect not to know that town meeting. The other, the real issue is whether or not people feel compelled to attend, to, you know, to vote on something. It's no different than, depending if you have uncontested races, you don't get a big turnout. Presidential, we know we're gonna get killed. You know, we know the turnout's gonna be massive compared to a local election, so it's sort of just the general way things go.
All right. Thank you, John. I think we'll consider it a bit more. Certainly under reports, it's not something we would vote to act on at this time, but in consideration of how effective it's likely to be, we may wanna reconsider the, from the cost standpoint for this year, so.
Well, the efficacy is certainly something to consider, but it's also, I think, it's a gesture on our part to reach out to people and to make everyone feel like every vote, it matters. So, you know, it's also a little bit of, you know, just reaching out to people and making sure that they know. But the other thing that maybe we could get information on is, so when we got our town census, we got this envelope that has a lot of information on it. Maybe that's a less expensive way of doing it and also for those people such as myself who really don't open the tax bill until it's due, it's, you know, it's right there, you can hardly miss it.
Sure.
Oh, so maybe if we could get, I don't even know how legal it would be.
Just, what you're holding right there, actually, the census includes a note about when town meeting is.
Yes, yes, it does.
Yeah. That's another.
But there's also, I like how everything is kind of, I mean, I don't even have to open this to get a lot of information. So if we could, would it be difficult to get an estimate on how to do that and even if it's, you know, how the post office approves this, to get the information on the envelope of the next tax bill?
I would agree that just something printed on the exterior envelope is probably at least as or more effective than an insert inside of it, so I'm happy to look into that.
Thank you.
Leslie?
And that's it for me. Thank you.
Leslie?
Okay, as usual, I'd like to thank the Police Department and the Fire Department for their monthly reports. One of the letters I'd like to read from last month's police report that Chief Liver puts together is from a student at Elgonquin and I'd like to read that. Dear Northborough Police Department, thank you so much for all the work you're doing at Elgonquin. It means a lot that you are putting in so much time into keeping us students safe at school every day. I want you to know that your efforts are extremely appreciated by so many students, school staff, and parents, wishing you a very happy holiday season. And I think they're really. It means a lot that you are putting in so much time into keeping us students safe at school every day. I want you to know that your efforts are extremely appreciated by so many students, school staff, and parents, wishing you a very happy holiday season. And I think there really are a lot of kids who do appreciate the presence. A lot of those kids may not be actively interacting with the officer there, but I think knowing that someone is there is a lot of peace of mind for kids and staff. So thank you very much for always having that going on. And I'd also like to read, as far as the fire department, a letter that was in the community advocate, a letter to the editor. And again, I can read the name aloud here because it was in the paper. The family of Stan Locke would like to thank the Northborough Fire Department for their prompt action, and especially for the compassion and dignity you showed Stan during this difficult time. We are so fortunate to have you. And they also thanked Hayes Funeral Home as well. And that's also very important. And for them, for people to put together a letter to the editor says a lot, that it really was important to them. And I think it's one thing to handle a situation medically, but to handle an individual with dignity is, means a lot to the family. So thank you very much for that. Also, I was pleased to see the paper bags at CBS. They, I asked her to show them to me, which sizes they had. They have three different sizes. One looks like just sort of like a lunch bag size, and then there's a little bit bigger, and then kind of this size. And it's funny, you start to hear comments about the paper now. Well, we're cutting down trees, and we're wasting trees, you know, to manufacture the paper bags. So you're going to hear both things. But the CBS bags were an example of the thin film plastic that needed to be done with by, was it January first? Is that what was voted on?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I have not been, I'm trying to think where else I've been in town, but I did look at their bags. But I assume everybody's in compliance that we know of?
Lowe's, definitely.
Lowe's is, yes, right. Ace, right.
Through the chair. The health agent has been in communication with the establishments well in advance and is spot checking to make sure that everybody understands what their responsibilities are under the new bylaw.
Okay. That's great. Thank you very much. And I would also like to wish Kelly Burke a happy retirement. I know she's going on to a new endeavor, but she was our senior center director. I know there was a big event last week, which I was unable to attend, but she's done a fabulous job for the town, and I want to wish her the best. And that ends my report.
Tim?
I've been involved with the Council on Aging and the Senior Center. They've been working on a new strategic branding and messaging program for the Senior Center and the Council on Aging. And I think it's going to, I'm hopeful that it will help people under the age of sixty realize the value that the Senior Center adds to the community. It's, it's a resource for not only people, you know, sixty and over, but for people that have parents in that age frame, age bracket, they may not realize that that's available as a, as a resource for them. So it's, it's been good to be a part of, and I know they're very excited about it. Thanks to the fire and police department for their reports. Chief Liver, I just wanted to ask about the buyback program?
Yes.
And how that went? Was it successful? Did you consider it a success and?
Absolutely. Yeah, we had a total of sixteen different items turned in. Five of them were actual working firearms, four handguns, I believe.
Oh, wow.
Semi-automatic pistols, rifles, and we had a lot of BB guns. And I think more importantly, we had a lot of replica pistols that you can't tell, that were collector pieces?
Yeah.
That weren't capable of firing, but in hands of the wrong person, you don't know that's the case until.
Yeah, that's just as dangerous, yeah. Awesome. Excellent. I'm glad to hear that. That's, I know we had some concerns about that.
Sixteen pieces we turned in.
Yeah. That's great. That's really great. It was really nice out this weekend, so it was nice to see everybody out and about. Unfortunately, uncovered some, some things that got under my skin a little bit. We were out at McAfee, and I know there's a lot of dog owners in town. I know there's a lot of good dog owners in town, but man, do the bad dog owners give all you dog owners a bad, just a bad image. I was astounded by just the absolute disrespect and just lack of care that people had. There was a pile of dog poop on the ground within arms' distance of one of the bag disposers. Like, you literally could have bent, grabbed the bag, bent over, put the poop in the bag and thrown it, but no, it's too much effort. I can't, I can't reach and get a bag. I'm just going to leave it for somebody to step in. The dogs not on leashes. It's in, on the paving, on the walkway around the park, just dog poop everywhere. And it's, the only thing I can think of is if one of one of your coworkers brought a toddler into your office and allowed them to behave like you allow your dog to behave at McAfee Park. They just went in their diapers, and you just took off the diaper and left it on the ground, and just waited for somebody else. And you don't even put another one on, you just let them go everywhere. And like, you would never let your kid behave like that, so why do you think it's okay to let your dog behave like that? It's really unfortunate because I know that a lot of people, especially on this board, really want to do something about helping people, dog owners, but you make it really hard when you don't, when you can't control your own dogs at, at the parks. I know the town puts a lot of effort into maintaining those parks. I coach kids soccer. They're filled on Sundays, Saturdays and Sundays with kids. It's astounding to me that people show such a lack of care for their community and the people that also enjoy the parks. So I don't, I don't know what else that we can do. Nest cameras, I'd like, it's unfortunate that you have to do something to police people with their pets. You know, on the flip side, I know we're going to talk about the dog park later, and not having a place for people to have off-leash dog time is an issue in town. And I was just wondering if it'd be possible, not to discuss tonight, but at a later point, if at the various parks throughout town, if you could designate times where it would be off-dog-leash time. You know, like Sundays from four to six at McAfee is off-leash dog time. Like, just so that people have an opportunity to have their dogs off-leash at parks. It's still open to the public, but then the public knows that during those times, you can have off-leash dogs. You know, maybe that would help. So there was the dogs. And then out walking, and people with just utter disregard for crosswalks. Again, it's astounding to me. My wife and my seven-year-old almost got killed on Saturdays. They were crossing the road, a guy stopped, woman behind him not paying attention, smashed into that guy, the car lurched forward, and almost hit my wife and seven-year-old son. And again, in front of McAfee. It's a park full of kids, and you're speeding, and you're not paying attention, you're on your phone. So when you're out driving, especially when the weather's nicer and people are out walking, crosswalks are there for a reason. Be mindful of them. You know, the people in this town are what make this town so enjoyable and incredible to live in. Just like to see it kept that way. And that ends my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Dawn?
I was able to attend the retirement party for Kelly Burke on Friday, and it was a wonderful success. People from the bistro and the friends of the seniors did an incredible job catering it, and it was just a tribute to Kelly and a tribute to all she's done for the town in Northborough. So I'd like to wish her well in her retirement and thank the people that put on such a lovely going-away party for her. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dawn. I'll just echo Dawn's sentiment to congratulate and thank Kelly Burke for all of her work at the Senior Center. She did an extraordinary job, very well-regarded. The Senior Center is really one of the highlights of the town, in part thanks to her leadership in running the programs there. So we appreciate all she's done and wish her well for her next venture. That concludes my report. John?
Nothing to say.
Very good. Thank you. Public comments. Backstrand.
I can just say here, Rick and I are.
Oh, can you, well, can you come up for a public comment, please? Just so the microphones have the.
Sure, sure.
Yeah.
Fran Backstrand, Seventy-six Cedar Hill Road. First, before Rick and I get on to our, we were here, just another thought on the town meeting. Not every property owner is a voting member. That if you sent in a reminder in a tax bill, it doesn't get to any of the renters, and it gets to property owners who don't live in town. So it may or may not be worth the money. That was just a thought when I was sitting out there. So anyway. All right. So Rick and I are here, and I apologize that we are here during public comments, but just the timing of your meeting and the next planning board meeting and the master plan presentation on the tenth didn't give us opportunity to try to get on your agenda. So we thought we would just take this opportunity to, to speak a little bit about the process and really just to get you up to speed on, on what's happening and to look for your support as the appointing body of the master plan steering committee. We wanted to make sure that you are supportive of the effort that was put into it over the eighteen months, of the fifteen volunteers that participated. Because we have had indications that the planning board, while it is their responsibility to accept, adopt, or approve a master plan, that there are indications that they are looking to either edit or change. We don't know what, because after a number of opportunities where we have asked, or they have been asked, what type of edits or changes are you thinking of making? They have not, they've declined to provide any specifics. I had a brief conversation with the chair after the master plan presentation to, was it wordsmithing, or was it substantive? And she declined to answer. At the next planning board meeting, both the town planner, as well as one of the members of the planning board, who was a representative on the master plan, asked the same questions. And they both were told that, nothing right now, we're still thinking about it, we'll talk about it at our twenty, at our meeting on the twenty-first. So Rick and I thought, well, maybe we need to reach out again. And so we reached out via email to the chair and said, well, we'll show up on the twenty-first if you have any questions, because a lot of work went into it. It was consensus building. And no one person should think that everything that they wanted or thought was a priority should be in it. Excuse me. I use two examples when I think about this. Is one, when we were looking at the high school, whether we're going to renovate or separate from Southborough. A committee was formed. There were varying views across that board. I mean, I know, I mean, I remember knowing that there were factions that were in total opposition, but they came together, they came up with a consensus plan and presented it to the town. Two weeks later, the representatives on the Board of Selectmen didn't turn around and say, okay, well, we're not really going to do that, we're going to change things. They accepted the, the plan, the plan. So did the solid waste. I had the privilege of doing that. I'm not saying that the planning board is going to throw this out, or the baby with the bathwater, but they're not, they're not coming forward with what are the changes or the edits or the recommendations, and are not open to discussing them. So I'm frustrated, Rick is frustrated. We just don't want lack of respect for the process. We did it through a public process, we got input from people, and again, it, it should be accepted as it was presented at the public hearing. There was opportunity to ask questions and to make comments, and they were taken. Now is the time to accept it as presented, not change it in any way, again, other than wordsmithing, if there was something that was out of line.
I think there are two issues here that Fran and I make issue with, and we're not sure to what extent the Board of Selectmen has any role in this or not. We just know the Board of Selectmen was the appointing authority for the master plan steering committee. So we viewed the fact that what we did in our charge to develop a master plan was done through the authority of the, of the Board of Selectmen. And although the planning board launched the effort, and the planning board does have the ability to take a vote and accept the plan, it was our thought and our belief that the actual development of the plan would be done by the steering committee, on which the planning board had representation, as well as a lot of other boards and representatives. As we became aware of the fact that there was an indication the planning board expected to take this plan, discuss it, and maybe modify it, we expressed a desire to the planning board chairman that at this meeting on the twenty-first, that public comment be allowed during the course of the meeting and this discussion. And it was our intention to be there on the evening of the twenty-first to talk about some of the things we're talking about with you, with the planning board. The chairman notified us that it was not her intention to open that discussion for public comment. So we felt we needed some vehicle to publicly state kind of what our concern is as far as this process going on. And we indicated to the planning board chairman that we thought that if, in fact, the planning board was interested in making changes to the plan, that they could do that, but as opposed to approving a modified plan, they should consider bringing the modifications back to the steering committee for another discussion. And once again, did not seem to be the point of view of the chairman. And in an email exchange that's gone back and forth recently, it seems like her opinion is that the steering committee was advisory, that we've done our job, and now it's the planning board's job to take this document, make any final modifications they feel necessary, and then approve it. And I think that's a disconnect between Fran and I and the planning board, was our understanding that our charge was to develop the plan with input from the planning board and finalize it. It seems like the planning board's opinion is that our role was advisory to give them, if you will, a final draft of the plan, for which they can now take that at a meeting, discuss it, and then change it. And then, once again, we're concerned that at this meeting, the chairman has decided not to allow any questions of public comment. So we're not sure exactly at this point, you know, what the next step must be. We felt we've put a lot of time and effort into creating the plan, and we're just concerned that the final changes to the plan may go outside of the process that was set up, and that the planning board is not going to allow any public discussion, meaning on the twenty-first of this. So that kind of, I think, summarizes where we are on it.
Right. Not only not allow public comment, when we, when asked or suggested at their last meeting that the master plan be part of the discussion moving forward, they said that wasn't necessary. It really does a disservice to the people that volunteered their time over the eighteen months and put into this. This is meant to be a citizen-participate process, and members of the planning board, both individually and collectively, may have a certain view of things, but the master plan was created by public input. Every one of you participated in some form or fashion in that process. We had hundreds of residents participate in some form of process, and we put in eighteen months, sixteen meetings, and fifteen individuals from different points of view to come together. And the concern is that the essence of the master plan will be changed in a way that won't reflect what that consensus was. We voted on things, sometimes unanimously, sometimes by majority, but we voted on them and said, this is what we thought should go into the master plan. And I have real concerns because my name is on there as acknowledging that I am one of the people who helped create that. And if it's not what I thought I was putting my name on, I mean, what, what can we do? And again, it's really just respect for the process and whatever you could do, even if it's just, you know, a sign of support, a letter of support, or, you know, just showing up on the twenty-first to support at the planning board, just to say that this was a process. We thought, you know, having so many people as part of the community to be part of it, it would then just be a pro forma to have it go before the planning board. We didn't expect them to want to make any changes. And again, we don't know. We don't, because each time they've been asked, there's been no specifics shared. That's it.
Thank you very much. You understand that as, since this is being offered under public comment, there isn't a role for the board here other than to take that input, but not necessarily to provide any recommendation or deliberate or take any formal action at this time.
Just make sure you're aware of, you know, what's transpiring.
The planning board's meeting is Thursday, this Thursday night?
They have one on the sixteenth and then one on the twenty-first. At the sixteenth, it's not up for, I mean, well, they can discuss whatever they want, but their final discussion and/or adopting, approving, voting on is on the twenty-first.
Twenty-first of January. Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yep. Amy?
Should I stay there or come up there?
You should come up here.
Okay. Amy Presky, forty-seven, Indian Meadow Drive. And I was on the master plan committee and I'm on the planning board, but I didn't expect to talk about it tonight because that's not what I came for. But I felt, after listening, I should probably come up and speak a little too. And I just want to let it be known. And I just want to let it be known, at the last minute, I mean, the last meeting, the last, like, few months, we've had a lot on the planning board agenda. We've had a lot of applicants. As you know, Jason, you attend, our meetings go to, like, 11 o'clock at night. So the very last master plan meeting, we talked about the planning board getting, talking about the master plan on January 21st. So in December, when it was brought up, we just weren't ready. We had a full meeting. I wasn't ready. I hadn't gone back to look or think or even talk about the master plan. I wasn't ready to talk about it that night. I hadn't, it wasn't on my mind at all. So when Kathy brought up and Michelle brought up, we should just vote on it tonight. Why are you guys waiting? It's just, I felt, and I'm speaking for myself, not the other planning board members, because they're not here, I haven't talked to them, but from what I thought is, the master plan is under the purview of the planning board. So the process was, the master plan finished it, and they handed off to the planning board. And it went to a public hearing, and we were going to listen to comments from the public that came to the public hearing. And then we were gonna have a meeting as a planning board to discuss what public comments we heard, was there anything that came out of the public comments, were there any more input from planning board members that weren't part of the master plan process, as this is a plan that falls under the planning board. And I can't speak for any other planning board members, but I don't feel like there's anything devious or nefarious happening in the background. I didn't know about any letters that you're talking about. Like, all this is a surprise to me. I came to ask a different question tonight. But from my point of view, I don't see anything devious and nefarious. And I know at the last meeting, when I was asked to vote on it, it was because I had in my mind, we were gonna talk about the master plan on the 21st. We have a full meetings that go to 11 o'clock at night. We weren't ready, I wasn't ready to talk about the master plan. I had pushed it off, knowing that the 21st was a date, so I'm not even gonna think about the master plan. So, I mean, and I'm not gonna think about it this Thursday, because it's on the agenda for the 21st. And this Thursday, we have, like, three applicants and bylaws. We're working on the bylaws for town meeting, and we're up against a deadline for town meeting. And we have certain things on our agenda we have to stick to, and I know the master plan is important. I worked on it for two years. I read it inside and out, as you know, a couple of times. And I know people worked hard on it, and we all, but I do know that it also falls under the purview of the planning board. So we have to do our due diligence and have a meeting and discuss it, and that's just under, it's one of the plans under our board. That would be like us asking the selectmen if we can, you know, take over the financial stuff that they do. I don't know. I don't know how to say it. I wasn't ready to talk about it tonight, so I was just kind of thrown off. But I felt like I did have to say something, because I am on both of those boards. And I'm shocked that Fran and Rick feel that way. So I guess that's all I have to say about that. My question, though, not that you guys probably want this other question either, is I felt like I wanted to ask the selectmen. I am also on, like, the town common committee, and everybody knows how long things take, because it's just the way the public, the way you have to do it in a public forum. And town hall, as a lot of people know, is gonna be, it's gonna come back to the town in two years. So I just wanted to ask the Board of Selectmen if there's any committee gonna be formed, if people are talking, if there's any talk about what's gonna happen to the old town hall. Like, right now, I notice there's just a dentist's office there, or like, or the selectmen, are you thinking that town hall is gonna go back into the old building? Is there any talk? Is there gonna be a committee? Because I'm just thinking, it's two years out, and I know how long it takes to have that process start. So I guess because I was on the master plan, it triggers all these things, and downtown revitalization was a huge part of it, and the town hall is a huge anchor downtown. So I'm just wondering if there's been any talk and if there are any plans for the old town hall. And I guess you can't answer, because it's a public comment.
Well, we don't have any substantive answer to offer. There isn't any definitive plan for the use of the old town hall. And as you know, from your participation on the master plan steering committee, it is identified as one of the major facilities in town that will require some evaluation and study to determine what the best and most appropriate use for it might be, so.
I was just thinking this year would be a good year to start, because it's two years out.
Well, again.
Right.
At least from one standpoint, and then again, I don't want to delve into this too deeply.
Right.
It's an element that falls under the category of the whole downtown revitalization. From the master plan implementation checklist, there are any number of things that we would need to choose to do, because we can't do everything at once. And so as we advance through this process and reach the point where we can create the implementation committee, and the implementation committee can begin to work with the implementation details and make some decisions or make some recommendations, that's the point where we would begin to understand what our options are and what paths we might choose to take.
So in 2022, I think we have, like, do you have, like, a year to decide? And then you have the option to buy it every 10 years?
Just to factual details on.
Sure. So there are things going on. I'm just, it's not appropriate for me to share them in this venue at this time.
Okay, I just.
It's obvious, we were aware of it, and there are things that are taking place. So at the appropriate time, if it's, if it makes sense to have a committee to do anything, we'll form a committee, but it's not appropriate to do that right now, in my opinion.
Okay. I just wanted to ask the selectmen.
Yeah.
And you. And my other question was about the fire station. I don't, this probably might not be an appropriate time either, but I noticed there are trucks over there, and there are, like, backhoes, and has the property been purchased?
It's private property, they can do what they want with it.
Okay, so it's not town's?
No, it has nothing to do with the town's actions on that property.
Okay. Has the town bought it, or you can't say? Did it go through?
We are, we are still finalizing the purchase and sale.
Okay. All right, thanks.
All intentions are that we will complete that transaction.
Okay, thanks. Those are my questions.
Sure. Thank you. Anyone else for a public comment? Hearing none. We will proceed. New business update regarding proposed dog park at Zero Hudson Street. John?
So as you know, we had originally participated in the DCR Partnership Matching Grant Funds Program. DCR had approved the dog park at Zero Hudson Street. And then there were some concerns regarding the property and whether DCR actually has control of that property and could authorize a dog park to be constructed there. So we've had back and forth considerable communication with DCR. I've included in your packet the November 7th letter that we sent to them with all of our questions and information pertaining to that particular location. We've had conference calls with Jennifer Norwood, who's a Director of External Affairs and Partnerships from DCR. And apparently, they just sent us a letter that's dated January 6th indicating that they have concerns about the property. It's really not clear. They gave us a reply, but it's not really a very thorough reply. It doesn't answer any of our questions, but they're indicating that there's concerns over the ownership of the property and whether or not they have the legal authority to have a park be constructed at that site. So the bottom line is where it stands right now is, they're declining to move forward with this particular grant round for us. We've asked for some additional information. I think this would be a point of discussion moving forward. But for this round, for the time being, I believe the dog park is not going to proceed at this point in time. So we will reimburse folks for their donations, because the donations were specific to a dog park at this location. We will continue to revisit this as appropriate, and to Tim's comments, you know, we continue to look at other possible locations and venues for this particular need. And there is a very big need in the town for a dog park. Of all the things that, in terms of recreational outlets, this is probably the thing that we get asked the most, questions about most often. And so for the time being, that project is not moving forward at that location, but the project itself, or the idea that we'll pursue a dog park, is not an idea that's entered. So that's where things stand at this point.
Okay. Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Execution of Cemetery Deed 1090. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board vote to execute Cemetery Deed 1090.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? Great, thank you. Any other business to come before the board? Just the executive session?
Need for a brief executive session.
Okay, we will have an executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Subsection 3, litigation, SA Farms. Due to the chair's determination that a discussion regarding this matter in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the position of the board.
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to enter into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 30A, Section 21, Subsection 3, litigation, SA Farms. Due to the chair's determination that a discussion regarding this matter in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the position of the board.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Julianne?
Aye.
Leslie?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Aye. And the board will return from executive session only to adjourn open session. Thank you.